Council meeting to order, Monday, July tenth, seven P. M. Roll call.
Michelle Otto.
David Paradise.
Kirby Moynah.
Sam Solars.
Cole Androff.
Jessica Bonnewell.
Jared Vogie.
Dan Reamer.
Michael Summerphone.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
See the flag anyway.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second.
Further discussion? I'll vote aye, Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Ms. Androff?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Androff?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye.
Motion passes five zero. Wright County Sheriff's Office. Okay, on to our public hearing.
Close the meeting.
I will make a motion to close the regular council meeting and open the public hearing to discuss the wellhead protection plan, part two.
I'll make a motion to close.
You just second it.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we, I will, we're now in public hearing. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns, or Jared, would you like to just do a brief summary of it? Or?
Yeah, I'd be happy to make a, or do a brief summary. So the city has been working diligently with the Department of Health, Barrow Resources, Minnesota Rural Water on developing the wellhead protection plan, phase two. Originally with phase one, there was DWISMA, or Drinking Water Supply Management Area, that was delineated as part of that. And really, the phase two, or the wellhead protection plan, part two, is identifying strategies to help preserve the resources that are the city's municipal wells and the groundwater associated with them. You'll notice in the plan, and it's rather lengthy, but there is, there are some action items that have been identified as part of the assessment and the plan of action, I guess it's called, and they kind of start on page sixty-six of your packet. And you'll note that the action timeline is twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-three. So there is some time to do that, however, it will require some staff resources and work from staff. So that'll be an ongoing effort as part of this plan. And with that, that is a brief summary, but ultimately, it's a plan that's put in place to protect the city's wells and aquifers that they obtain the water from. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have regarding the plan.
Questions for Jared? Hearing none, I will look for any public comment. Is there any public comment at this time? Is there any public comment regarding the wellhead protection plan? Third and final time, is there any public comment, questions, or concerns with the wellhead protection plan? Hearing none, I will make a motion to close the public hearing regarding the wellhead protection plan and reopen the regular city council meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Think we need a resolution for you to adopt it, don't we?
They have to do that after.
After, yeah. So we are now back in our regular city council meeting. I will make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fourteen.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Androff?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Motion passes five zero. City council.
Uh, city council meeting, park rec, member meeting, and celebrate Montrose.
Uh, just a city council meeting.
Uh, yeah, just the city council meeting. The city council and League of Minnesota Cities Conference. How was that conference? It was busy. About seven hundred and fifty showed up. But it was good. Some good speakers.
I had city council and park and rec.
Uh, fire department.
Good evening, mayor and council. Excuse me. In your packet is the June twenty twenty-three activity report. Nothing too special to note. I would like to make a couple of quick acknowledgements, one for Dustin Falk for his brief time on our department, and then to David Paradise and Jennifer Branny for completing fire one, two, and hazardous materials operations. It's a very in-depth course that they spent a lot of time on. They've completed all the courses and testing, and they are all completed with that now. So congratulations to them. Then just a quick update on some emergency management items that are included in here. The security infrastructure project is underway. Doors have been replaced at the Public Works and City Hall so far. They're coming tomorrow to do the doors here. After that, they'll start working on the keying system, the security cameras, and the FOB system and stuff. So they're very interested in just keeping the project going piece by piece here as parts and their time allows. The fence has been constructed back by the generator and stuff. We have a couple of little cleanup items to deal with, with the contractor there, but overall, he did a very good job. The fence looks pretty secure, I think. So other than that, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yep, thanks, Kevin.
City engineer?
Mayor council, enclosed in your packets this evening is a resolution related to the twenty twenty-three street improvement project. The, the location map in the packet on page seventy-eight identifies the streets. I think that you're all familiar about Hogan Drive, Hogan Circle, Garfield, Garner Circle, Hill Street area. If you recall, when this project was initially contemplated, Clementa was included as part of this, but staff has identified a potential funding opportunity that that may be a great candidate for, so we're recommending that we apply for that state funding as a result of the legislature allocating funds towards that program rather than moving it forward at this time and, and look at applying for those funds and move that forward next year. So that's why that's not in there. I think it would be prudent to apply for those funds that could help offset some of those costs. So that's why we've left that out. But ultimately, pending your approval of the plans and specs tonight, we would do a bid opening on August eighth, which would allow us to bring the bids back to you on August fourteenth at your next meeting. And then construction could begin late August, early September, so that it could be complete late October, early November. So with that, there, as I mentioned, there is a resolution in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Jared? Okay, uh, hearing, no further questions, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids.
I'll second.
Further discussion? I'll vote aye, Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Ms. Androff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Any other updates for us, Jared?
Uh, nothing specific, other than the downtown improvements project. Obviously, there's some punch list items that remain to be completed by the contractors. The hot, dry weather hasn't been helping with much of the turf. As we've been getting some periodic calls about that, we did try to send out a, a notice about how turf should be handled. It's okay to mow, mow the tall weeds, things of that nature. But with these conditions, it's just tough to get fresh grass to grow too. So that is about the only concerns that we've been fielding calls on, so, which is not atypical for any project, so. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Jared?
Thanks, Jared.
Uh, park and rec.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Not a whole lot, since we have not had a meeting since your guys' last meeting. We should have two by the time you guys meet. It was just due to the holiday with the Fourth of July being on a Tuesday. We did not meet last week, we're meeting tomorrow. The only thing we were looking for an update on was maybe guidance on how to handle the Celebrate Montrose coin game sponsorship. That was the last thing we had talked about. We're gonna look for, I believe, some direction from, I don't know if it was city, like, city council or city staff, lawyer, maybe?
So I did have an opportunity to reach out to our legal counsel about, it was originally before last meeting, asking them about the donation of funds for the game, which we had talked about, the city cannot donate funds. So the question was modified for me to ask whether we could, the word was sponsor, but from what I got from it was if Park and Rec could pretty much work kind of an event within the event host, that portion within the Celebrate Montrose event. The, being that I was talking to a lawyer, the answer was not a very definitive yes or no. There were more caveats and conditions. When I asked, I equated it to what he had previously said would be justified, which was the events that we had done with like the Easter egg hunt, this would be something similar, kids picking up, you know, free stuff on the ground or digging for it in sand. And he said, there are, you know, some authorities for youth programming, but that specifically is something being hosted by the city, performed by the city, on city property. This would be an event within another event, so it'd be under the guise of, this is Celebrate Montrose, put on by Celebrate Montrose. He did not recommend for the city to take the risk of entering in that because of how specifically, there's no specific authority to hold that event, and there's, we could have a long discussion about what specific and implied, implied authorities the city has to host and throw events. And I think what I got from him actually calls into question some of the other events that we have put on in the past, what we currently have in the park and recreation schedule of events, specifically Summer Splash, Summer Festival. Much of what he directed me toward calls into question whether or not the city has a legal standing to participate or host those events as well. There's specific stipulations, and I could go into detail, if council's interested, about where that leaves us with that. Though, it does sound like a definitive no, what he was saying was mostly, the city would open itself up to risk if we were to host an event that we don't have legal charter to host within that event, especially for the optics of it being someone else's event. If we were to take that risk, have event within, within the event, it would be something that, of course, city staff, including, that would extend to park and recreation, would have to have insurance for their portion of the event, for their area of the event, and all those participating into it. So we would have to get a rider on our insurance to extend to that event specifically, and I think the cost in that would also come likely more, more than the amount that we're talking about running the event. So that's why, in summation, he just, his legal opinion was to recommend against it for the risk and the, the more attributes that would be coming in to try to execute that, an event within an event. And then whether we discuss it here right now, or at a later date, in a meeting or in a workshop, about what, what events and where the city's opening itself up to liability, participating in certain types of events, funding things that aren't under specific authorization to fund. We could get into it right now.
Well, that is gonna bring up further questions, because the other thing we were gonna add, the only other thing I had to add is that we have a September thirtieth date for a community event.
Then it would be good to get into it now, not because I think that anything that I've dug up would prohibit that event, or hosting it as the city, but because there's certain ways that we would have to handle the money and fund it that would make it okay. So there is generally, there's generally a no, a rule against cities funding events broadly, community festivals, summer festivals, those types of things. The, there are then carve-outs against that that have either been added to law or opinion through litigation of other things. So certain things that are allowed are, there's expenditures up to a certain amount for Memorial Day. They get down to the nitty-gritty of even defining like three hundred dollars per seventy-five thousand population. So when they're carving out what events can be done, the, you know, three hundred dollars for an event, and then another one once we, you know, in the near future when we hit seventy-five thousand and one. So you, you can tell from the way a lot of the opinions from the state auditor are written, how out of the norm it would be for a city to fund event. Now, in my experience, I've been to a lot of city events around the state, so maybe they're finding some kind of legal loopholes that the League of Minnesota's not, or our legal council is not. But I think much of it is funded through community organizations, sponsored by, sponsorships coming into the city. So the carve-outs are Memorial Day, so, Memorial Day, music and, music provided for no cost is something that cities can do, but there's a bunch of carve-outs. What I envision as being a yes would be talking to Christie and what's kind of planned, what I've heard is planned for your event. With what the city has left in recreational programming, I think that would fit well into what music would cost, and that is specifically carved out as it's under the authority of, within statutory cities, for the mayor and council to authorize music, free music for its public. So that, that remaining money could go to the band. We have sought and received a handful of sponsorships for the event that you're talking about, and those sponsorships could go to the other things. And as we mentioned in the meeting last month, also, you know, extending or expanding our presence as far as what the city already provides in its parks, sanitation, or any other equipment, that's within the scope. You know, we can expand those on the city's budget for sanitation, for mini-biffs and whatnot. So there should be a complement that would work with the city funding what it legally can fund and the donations that the city's received from.
Makes sense.
Employers and groups to fill the rest.
Yeah.
I think it negates that, but I think maybe it would be worth it to, whether it be the lawyer drop a memo directly related to park and recreation and the bylaws, or maybe we have a discussion, I could come to a park and rec meeting maybe later this year, talking about the coming year and setting bylaws, and we could maybe specify exactly what park money versus, or a policy on looking out for sponsorships and donations from, you know, other employers and, and groups. So I might set forth, so we're on a legal footing starting next year, and no issues yet this year.
No, that sounds reasonable. All right, it's a lot more clear, actually. Matters where the money comes from and where it goes. Okay. I don't have anything else. I know there's gonna be a lot of discussion the next two meetings for our whole group. We are swearing in Kim Niska tomorrow, so we'll be back up to five members. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add right at the moment.
Is there any park and rec questions?
Isn't the meeting Thursday?
Uh, no, it's on Tuesdays.
They got switched to this coming Tuesday because of the holiday and everybody's schedule, I do believe.
Yeah, I think last month, we approved the switch to Tuesdays.
Yep, it was on, it'll be Tuesdays.
Okay.
The first Tuesday was the Fourth of July, so it's got switched to this.
Otherwise, we would have met that, but.
Yeah, no.
That wasn't happening.
No way. Thank you.
Thanks, Toby.
Thanks, Toby.
Is there any other discussion on the coin game sponsorship? I don't think that it should be that tough for a city to sponsor a kid's game, or a kid's event, or something along that nature. I, I don't know what else to say about that. I, I don't think it should be that difficult, and I don't know if it's an interpretation of it, or if it's just that the state legislator has that tightly defined. I don't know.
Seems silly to me.
Three, three hundred dollars specifically for Memorial Day is what a city's allowed to spend, unless you're over seventy-five thousand people.
I, I only say that specifically because it seemed absurdly specific.
Yes.
But not in the direction we're looking for. So.
No.
I, I use it as an example because if they're that specific about one carve-out, then when we're talking about the same type of money here for a, a single event, there, there, in none of those stipulations from the state auditor do I see a carve-out for what we're talking about.
Public Works?
Mayor council, this is the first one, is kind of an update. I was hoping to have the quote, but it did not come in, in time. We have a major piece of equipment that failed at the wastewater facility. It is twenty-two to twenty-three years old, a final clarifier. It's gonna be quite the task to get this thing repaired, and I just want to give you a heads up on a, a major expenditure coming your way. I guess the question is, you might have, do we need to fix it? Yes. That plant will probably be running another three to five years either way, whether we decide which way we're moving with the wastewater part. And this is not gonna be a cheap fix.
Do you have any idea?
Thank you.
Ballpark?
Us guys are thinking around a hundred thousand dollars. So.
What broke?
A clarifier is a in-ground tank with moving arms that settle sludge out to the bottom and then get pushed it to the waste tank. The main arm going down from the deck, which goes over the whole top of this in-ground tank, down to the bottom, kind of snapped off. Oh, we think, but what's gonna have to happen is a crane's gonna get, have to get hired to lift the roof off this thing, and then pull all the guts out of this thing. And then this requires electrician, a specialty crew to come in, probably a vacuum crew to come in, because there's some sludge down the bottom of that tank that they do, will not work in. And then, once we got it out laying on the ground, these large, large pieces, we'll figure out what broke, and then the reassembly of the whole thing and put back together. The age of the facility is starting to show. That's, I'm just giving you the heads up. So have you got any other questions on that?
I will say, can I say one thing?
What's that?
Can I say, just say one thing? I, I don't like your heads up. Because every time you say heads up, it costs a lot of money.
I, yeah, I, we did not want this to happen. It's, and it really, to me, isn't, you guys might be thinking, lack of, you know, maintenance? This is stuff that sits in sludge and ferric chloride and spins twenty-four seven. This equipment is old, but it's a major piece of the treatment process, and without this clarifier, I would feel this winter, if we don't have it fixed, we're gonna start failing parameters. So think of it as a giant settling tank that we mix the chemicals in and settle the bad stuff out in. It's pretty much what it is, and it's covered by a huge tin roof or aluminum roof. Yeah, that was a, an experience. So as soon as I get the quote, and it's not like I can really go out and get other quotes for this, there are specific companies that work on this, and one or the two responded. Any other questions? Sorry for the bad news. Bad news, seems like every time I'm asking for money or telling you something broke.
No, I think we should just start taking him off the agenda for.
I have no problem with that.
At least a couple of months.
Have no problem with that.
What else you got, Danny?
Part two, the water shut-off policy, I guess we're looking for you guys to approve this. Kristy? We had talked about streamlining this a little bit due to some things that happened here, and maybe, anyways, it, it, we'll go through it. It's, and we, we, me, Jess, Kristy, and some opinions from employees on Public Works kind of came up with this, so you, you guys could see the bullet points, and I guess I'll take any questions you got on any of this.
This was something we started talking about when we talked to Public Works earlier this year about some security things, and, and just maybe having a, a single policy to come back to, because they will, you know, if people's water gets shut off, they get called on nights, on weekends, you know, and that's just not how that should operate. So this kind of clears it up and will post this on the website and make sure people are aware when they get shut off.
If there isn't a physical obstruction to not allowing somebody, us to shut off the water, what is the repercussion of that, other than just giving them a fee and keeping the water on?
There really isn't. I guess they're gonna get a fee for something we didn't even do, you know? So mainly what this is, is curb stops, land and driveways. Curb stops, people know, and they'll get smart, and they'll park their truck right on top of it. We want to shut them off, we can't, and they sit there. So now we can, you're gonna allow us to fee them like we shut them off, even though we didn't. Doesn't happen too often, but it happens. The first bullet point is allowing you guys every year to adjust that fee. I suggest you triple it, but that's just me. But allows you guys to adjust that fee every year on disconnection fee. I did talk to another town, I won't say who it was, but their original fee was fifty dollars, and they had a lot of shut offs, and they jumped it to three hundred, and that went down to next to zero within a couple of months. Bullet point two, instead of like, you know, being a month behind or two months behind, we're just setting a dollar amount, because right now, the shut-off fee is a hundred bucks. And if you're eighty-nine dollars behind one month, you're getting charged more to get your water shut off than what your bill is. So we kind of jumped that up. And the reason why we're doing winter months also, it's just, it's just more work for us to go there in the winter and blow their front yard. Um, and the reason why we're doing winter months also, it's just, it's just more work for us to go there in the winter and blow their front yard off to, uh, you know, get to their curb stop. So, um, and other things in here saying like, uh, your water being shut off is not considered an emergency, so if they call us on the emergency number, your water was shut off for a reason, it was delinquent payment. We're not gonna run in and pay a guy two hours, cause that's what they get paid, minimum call-in time. Or something that's gonna take them fifteen minutes. Now, I'm not saying in turn, this might not kick a few phone calls to council members or the mayor, cause people get pretty disgruntled about it. But it clearly states in here that if they are shut off, you're out, you're, and they didn't pay by Friday over the weekend, they're gonna be off the entire weekend. Also, if we leave at four o'clock, we're winding down, if they don't have it paid, or we ain't told to turn it on, they ain't getting turned on till the next day. Gives us guidelines to be able to go by and treat everybody fairly.
One more thing to say about the obstructed, uh, is a lot more time for these disconnections is spent by Christie compiling the paperwork and calling these residents and emailing them multiple times. Um, a lot more time is spent on that than the physical shut off. So the idea of the fee shouldn't happen if it's obstructed and it can't be shut off. The guys are still going out there to see that. The time it would take to actually shut it off is marginal.
Well, and that, that's not what I was worried about. I was more, my question was more, what happens to them if they do that? Is there an additional fee on top of that? Is it, if they build some sort of structure around it, if they tar over the top of it, like is there something we're going to do that, you know, we would fix the problem and then charge them for that labor? That's where I was going with that question.
If that special circumstance comes, yeah, I guess. I mean, you could add as a bullet point in here if you'd like, make a thing. I've, I've only seen it happen once, but.
Uh, cause there are ones that I've seen that are basically in the middle of a driveway. Or less. I mean, those are some of the older parts of town, but somebody just, I mean, if they don't know and they pave over it, I, what are we gonna do?
We'll go there, I've been to driveways where they needed their water shut off, they had a leak, and I'm like, well, you put in a new driveway, and you covered it. So guess what I'm doing? I'm getting the saw, and I'm cutting your new driveway apart to get your water shut off. So sometimes homeowners have to take some responsibility in some things too, you know, right? So. It, it doesn't happen that often, but this, this just covers us, you know, and if we get to that special circumstance, Kirby, I guess we get to that special circumstance. I mean, how many bullet points you wanna put on here? I don't, I don't know.
I was, I was just curious what, if there's a repercussion for people, you know.
We could, you could make that on a fee schedule next year when we approve the fee schedule, like, uh, obstruction fee. Along with a shut-off fee, right? So, um, another thing that this is doing, I wanna remind you is we are no longer hanging pink tags. Homeowners are not gonna be notified that way anymore. Wright County told us years ago to stop doing that. I know it's very effective, and it helps Christie with her job, but, um, it's kinda puts Public Works in a bad spot, so. Uh, we talked about this in workshops and safety-wise. So yeah, it's gonna, it's kinda gonna put an end to that too. But they are still gonna get notified, you know? Uh, I'll let Christie kinda tell you more if you want to, like how they're gonna get notified. They're gonna get notified on the late notice.
As long as we have current contact information for them, they'll be notified before they get shut off.
We talked about adding a footnote to late notices, so they would, we could be pretty guaranteed they would at least get that. Their phone number isn't accurate or their email, at least they would get that initially as well, so we're trying to be as effective as possible.
Yeah, so.
Do we know if there's any precedent set where, instead of physically shutting off anybody, they just get the fee, and therefore we don't have the weekend calls? You know, where it's, yeah, you're, you're behind. At this point, at this date, you're gonna get the fee for the disconnection. We're not gonna dis, physically disconnect, but you're gonna get the fee. Is there anything, any cities out there doing stuff like that?
I guess I really didn't look into it. They do get a five percent fee right away if they're late. That's, that's on our bills here, right? Five percent? So, um, I know we had talked about other things, but we just felt as staff that this was the best way to move forward. I mean, I guess we can, I didn't really call other towns and ask specifically different things.
Just see if it was something that we could do that we're, therefore we don't have the weekend calls and complaints and.
Oh, we're gonna get the weekend calls regardless, cause we have PSN, right? You don't pay your bill all week, you come home Friday night, and you pay your bill online, you want that water on, right? Correct?
But that, what I'm, what I'm getting at is that way we don't have those issues, cause nobody's been physically shut off. They've been charged the fee that is assessed for being shut off.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, sometimes that physical shut off is literally the only way to get them to even contact us.
Okay.
I think it would be, I mean, you'd basically be looking at, they're two hundred and fifty dollars behind, and then, oh, because you're two hundred and fifty behind, we're not gonna shut you off, but we're gonna throw another two hundred dollar fee on top of it.
I think what you'll end up having happening with that, from what I know from some other cities, is at the end of the year, you'll have a lot of stuff getting added to tax rules, which is an expense to the city. Or you would, basically what you said, it's just, you're gonna have one person come in here and tell you the story, then you're gonna start setting precedents, and now everybody who gets this two hundred dollar disconnect turn off. Everybody's like, you waited for me, I was on vacation.
Yeah.
And it takes one of those, and then you're gonna have lines here every day. I've seen that at several conferences before.
And we don't, like, we shut off very few people. The real call to action is just to call me, and we set up a payment plan. Don't make anybody feel uncomfortable about it. It's like, what can you do? How can we help? That's really the goal, and most people respond really, really well and kindly to that. It's, it's basically the same repeat effectors.
Correct, and like, you know, for instance, uh, I'm on call and they call me and, you know, I paid this, well, we don't, Public Works doesn't know what they owe, what, you know, we don't know. We, you were on our list, we shut you off, and we ain't turn you back on till utility billing tells us to turn you back on. And then they just go off. And now I can say, hey, you were obviously two hundred and fifty dollars behind at least. Right? So, it's not like you were month, one month late, and it could be one month, but the most likely it's gonna be two or three. So. But again, Public Works has given the list, we shut them off, Public Works gives the list, we turn them back on. A lot of them want us to take payment, do this, do that, and it's, that's not what we do. I think it just streamlines it a lot more for us, gives us rules. And I think the most important thing to my guys on call is the part where it's not considered an emergency.
Well, give us Public Works some consistency with that too.
And we, we're gonna, obviously she said if you approve this tonight, it'll be posted on the website, and we'll say, hey, go on the website. Um, dot number five, it's not considered an emergency with on-call staff. Yeah.
So, is everything current and up to date online for people to pay online? So, I know that there was like a little glitch in the system a week or so ago. All of that, I mean.
That's something that I can't answer. You'd have to ask that to Christie. I don't know.
I mean, it's corrected until PSN does it again, which just happened again last Friday. So, I mean, it happens often. You know, that's kind of out of our control.
So how do.
That situation, I mean, everybody was incredibly nice.
Right. So how do we fix that though, so that that doesn't, I mean, that's what the, not.
That's coming from that vendor.
The company.
Yeah. So there's no real control we have over that. I mean, you know, all we really do is press a button in our system, and all of it's supposed to transfer over, and if that doesn't happen, that's an issue for them that we either have to reach out, or they have to reach out to us and let us know that transfers didn't happen, or things are not up to date. But that's kind of out of our control.
Is there other companies?
Specifically, it hasn't been.
There are, but PSN is a huge company. I mean, they do payments for cities, for all sorts of companies.
They do, and I think that, I think the thing that Dan and I discussed was like trying to observe that concern. You aren't going to have a disconnection notice if there's a glitch, if we put the, the threshold at two hundred and fifty dollars, right? It's gonna get caught before anybody gets to that, because that's a pretty high bill, right? So if there was an error, we're kinda catching that, because most people are gonna be at that during one month, right? So if there was an error, there's time to resolve it before they would get any kind of a notice, and hopefully prevent that.
Yeah, I think this last time Christie contacted all the people that were affected, all the late fees were written off. Um, everybody was very kind about it and understood because technology glitches happen. You know, these things happen in the, in the world we live in with computers and, and these things, you know, um, just not preventable a hundred percent of the time.
You don't think two fifty, we'll run into any issues with people watering in the summertime and running up a bill of that in a month? Do those happen very often, two hundred and fifty dollar bills?
Not a ton. I mean, not a ton. And quite honestly, I'd say most people call me, and they're like, you know, or I'll send them a letter saying, you know, you have high usage, give me a call, and we kinda talk through it. I would say ninety-eight percent of people are like, oh my goodness, didn't realize it was that much. Can I pay half this month, half next month? Yeah, great. You know, like, that's, so I think it's, if it happens, those people are pretty quick to call. It's really more about people that avoid the call, and you're just left in limbo. It's like, I'm happy to help you, I'm happy to work with you, I just need to talk to you. And so, most people are really good about this, and this will hopefully encourage those people that don't wanna pick up the phone. Just give a phone call and, just to communicate the plan. That's it.
Cause like, you know, then again, Kirby, I wasn't shocked that my electric bill went up a hundred bucks last month. My AC was running the whole time.
Right.
So if people are watering their grass and they want it green, they should be shocked that their bill goes up.
Yeah, well, and a lot of those people know.
Everybody. It's just what it is. I mean, you want a green yard and your neighbors is dry, guess what? I bet your water bill's gonna be more than his. That's just, I'm just trying to put it bluntly, you know?
Oh, I understand what you're saying. I was just, just curious, that's all.
And again, most people are, most people are grateful for this, right? They're nice, they're kind, they understand. And I usually view it as everybody, I always see most people just forget. It's not about them not wanting to, it's like, like it's busy, you know, no big deal, we'll get you cut up. You know, kind of more about trying to support them rather than letting them get seven hundred dollars behind. And then it's like, that's harder to catch up than two hundred. So it's more trying to, to be of service to them.
On the topic of water, how are the aquifers looking?
What was that again?
Enough water for rest of summer?
Well, that's another thing I kinda wanna talk about. Uh, we should probably think about putting on a watering ban. Um, we're getting kinda close to the threshold here. Um, Wright County sent the email out. Um, not a full watering ban, maybe an, um, odd even right now. Um, but it's gonna be how much code enforcement you wanna do on it, like. I mean, I'd have to send the guy around every day for like two hours, or have him come in at night. We should just make it public that they should be odd even watering every other day. Your house number ends odd, you water Monday, Wednesday, whatever, but. Um, yesterday, we pumped the most we pumped all year, and it was about six hundred and fifty thousand gallons. Which our normal is about three hundred thousand. So. It's not being forced yet, but it's coming. Really close to coming.
And that only includes like watering your lawns, right?
No, I mean, well, yeah, that's, that's what's doing it, yeah. I mean, yeah, you can do whatever you want in your home to live. It's the irrigations and the gardening and the, and the people with the green grass. That's.
But you can still water your gardens. If it's a food garden, yeah.
We could go back to that discussion. Uh, so you want approval for this water shut-off policy?
Yep. And, you know, if you guys feel like every year we need to revisit it, we can, you know, but we just wanna start somewhere. And implement this one, and, you know, I think it'll be very effective, and I think it helps Christie streamline her job a little bit better, and, and Public Works kinda got an outline on exactly what rules we need to follow.
There any comments, additions, or subtractions to the water shut-off policy that we wanna see? It's good, clear as mud?
Yep.
I could've said clear as tap water. I will make a motion to approve the updated water shut-off policy.
I'll second.
Further discussion. Ms. Andrea?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
All vote aye. Motion passes five zero. Uh, so what, what did Wright County exactly say about the, the usage? It's just, it's getting too high?
Oh, they're not saying about the usage, they're saying we're in a drought. They don't know our usage. They, they got a drought area map.
I did post all that information to the website under the homepage and our announcements. Some conservation tips, as well as the drought map, and just that we are officially in a stage, like a D one, like a first-stage drought.
We're a first-stage drought. There's some parts of the state are two or three, but we're, we're, we're right there.
I, I hate to do it, but why, why wait at this point? Everybody knows how bad of a drought it is. I, I mean, it's, it's terrible, and there's, all this, a bunch of cities around us are all doing it. Howard Lake, Waverly.
Watertown.
Watertown, Buffalo has, do they do every other?
Yeah, they're odd even.
I think right now, we'll keep an eye on it, but going to, uh, odd even would probably be a good start.
Yeah.
I think the best thing that we can do is pump information out via social media or notes up of bills or something like that, saying, remember to conserve your water and everything.
Cause we're in a drought, yeah.
We're in a drought. People can't recognize that.
Can you, the information you just said was on the city webpage, can you post that to the Facebook page?
Yep, we can post that with Facebook too. Yep. Yeah, I believe it's a link for the conservation information for Wright County, and then there's a photo and just some information, so.
So do you wanna go every other? Yeah, we would need some sort of enforcement plan.
Odd even, I mean, that means if your house is an odd number, and the end of the house number, you can water Monday, Wednesday, Friday, but yeah, we'll have to come up with something.
And who's gonna police that?
Correct, that's, that's where it gets hard.
I mean, that's like a.
We don't, yeah.
All-day event.
Right.
Well, and I'm pretty sure the ordinances don't even mention enforcement of a drought policy.
No.
You have absolutely nothing in place, so it's criminal.
I think we might have something in the fee schedule that we can.
We have something in the fee schedule, and we do have an audit stating the Public Works Director can put it on at any time without council approval. But I'm just running it by you guys.
I think maybe doing some education and just letting people know, like maybe, you know, cut back to watering every other day, or cut back on your watering period.
Dan, have you checked what the water usage is at the gardens?
No.
I usually don't look at them till we take them out in the fall.
Well, that's not where it's coming from, even the darkness.
It's, it's your big irrigations, LGI. Those, those areas out there with the big irrigation systems, we all know where they're at. You drive the neighborhoods where the grass is green, that's who's using your water. I don't know what to tell you. Those, those community guards are probably a drop in the bucket right now, I would guess, compared to some of these prinker irrigation systems. Like, am I wrong, was a million gallons in one, one month? A million gallons on one of them in a month.
On an irrigation?
Yeah.
That was not me.
Mind you, in the air, we have two hundred, we have three hundred thousand. Mind you, in the air, we have 200, we have 300,000 gallons sitting in the air. So that means they drained our towers three and a half times to water that grass.
So in, in the information that'll be sent out, it, it talks about in there too of watering in the mornings or in the evenings, not during the day. Cause that's, I mean, that's a big one. People do water during the day and it just evaporates right away.
Yeah, I think that's part of Wright County's information.
Community gardens.
They, well, the community garden should not be watering during the day.
They were there at three o'clock today.
Yeah, it should, it should be morning and afternoon, late afternoon.
Another thing that. Playing a little bit into it is, um, they are, your seed guys are still watering these areas and they're pulling from our hydrants, so.
They are.
Oh yeah. I mean, they're not hauling it in by truck. They, truck empty, they hook onto a hydrant and pull it, the water.
That might be, that could be some of it, definitely.
That's, it's, it's some of it. I mean. But it's, it's mainly irrigation systems. Or people that are, have second meters or watering the heck out of their grass without irrigation. I, but that's usually where your water comes from. Your, your big users.
And the enforcement part is difficult, but there might just be a community accountability enforcement where it's like, now we all know it's every other day. And if you do it, all of your neighbors know. I mean, it's not much, but it might just be enough to bring some of those numbers down a little bit where there's some community accountability.
Yep.
And those big irrigation system ones too. I mean, they're pretty easy that they can just.
They can just shut them off, yeah, so.
I guess it's worth a try. I, I just don't want to, I, I would hate to see a full on ban because they, I mean, it does suck. But, you know, if we get to that point, I'd rather the aquifer not collapse.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll try some education and, and encouraging people to water, you know, evens and odds and.
I think we'll.
Go from there.
Yeah, and go by complaint base to start out with. Let the neighbors rat the neighbors out, whatever. Um, we'll see how bad it actually gets. Uh, as far as consumption, right? You know, we're keeping a close eye on what we're using every day. So. Cause honestly, like you said, Michelle, none of us are gonna be out driving around for hours and hours every day to look and see who's sprinkling and who's not. Who's watering their garden. Like, we're not gonna go in their backyards and, you know, it's just not gonna happen.
On, on Michelle's point though, can we put a notice out to the community garden people that the watering needs to be in the morning time before? Whatever time you feel appropriate and after five o'clock?
Yeah, uh, Christie's got all their emails. She could shoot them an email or something.
Okay.
Anything else on the water? Got anything else, Dan?
I don't have anything else.
Thank God.
Positive.
All right, uh, old business, radar signs for traffic control.
Uh, Mayor and Council, there are some quotes included in your packet for both, um, a stationary sign as well as a movable trailer that would read speed signs.
And there is a third option out there. It's, uh, basically the mountable sign on a two wheeled dolly that you can lock onto a telephone pole or a street sign or something like that. And that one adds up pretty much right from the beginning.
I would personally like to see the fixed signs in a few different areas around town instead of buying the cart and lugging it around. But we would have to get probably, what, three or four of the attachable ones?
Minimum.
Correct, and they do have to come down in the winter, by the way.
Yeah.
I mean, it's recommended that they don't, they're solar powered, so you don't want those coming down. Talking to the company, but.
I would recommend starting with one. I don't know how much of a discount you're getting if you buy three or four of them, but I think we should probably try for one. See what a pain it is, see how easy it is to move. Maybe if you get that dolly one, for example, the middle of the road one where you realize that this thing sucks. Okay, let's try a mountable one. Oh yeah, this is, this is the ticket or you take, you know, then you have to fleet up all three options type of thing. Uh, but if you get four of one and we realize we can't pull data off of it, the batteries stink, they're not working as expected. Now we have four pieces of equipment that are gone. There's a lot of different companies that make them out there. Uh, you can buy them on Amazon right now. So we have issues with one, that doesn't mean that we're stuck with four or five.
I'd, I'd like to see the mountable one.
Should we just order one and see how it goes?
I would want specifically where you guys want it. So it's gotta go on an existing pole or we gotta put a pole in, right? So.
Well, they're saying they're driving 60 miles an hour on First Street.
First, we all knew that was coming, right? Thank God for that center line.
Got the recent stripes out there.
So, um, whatever, wherever you guys want it, but once it's up, it's up. The only thing it's gonna come down for is winter storage.
No, we're gonna have to take it down to get the data off it, probably.
Um, from what I read, these are Bluetooth, but I, I, you go up with your phone and it downloads the data and you bring it back, but maybe you're right.
But it would have the ability to, what I know some communities do even with the mountable ones is they put it there for two weeks. Then they take it down for a week. They put it on a different place for two weeks.
Right.
But now we're talking staff time.
I mean, we can do that too. It's, it's putting on existing signs would be a lot easier than putting a new sign in every single time. Cause you gotta call and locate, you gotta, you know.
I think you almost have to limit it to where you have a speed sign from.
And a question for you. We get this data and being as your Wright County cop. I mean, does that mean you guys are gonna patrol it more then? If we get like?
If I have good, hard data from the city that I patrol, that says, oh wow, there is, you know.
A ton of speeders.
70 out of 100 cars are going 40 in this third, yeah, I'll sit on it without question. But if I have that data, it's also gonna prove the opposite point too, where you have somebody coming and saying, everyone's 60 on First Street. And you can look at the data, the highest one is 32 in a 72 hour period. No, you know, so it, it goes both ways with that.
Right.
Which isn't bad.
But data is king.
Yep.
Honestly, with something like this and these have the ability to turn the speed thing off and just collect the data, sometimes that's the best thing to do too. A lot of times when those new flashy things show up, oh, be up fast, I need this thing going. Whereas you turn that off and still collecting that data, it's just not giving them the actual real time feedback. So there's a lot of options with these.
There is.
And Dan's gonna try and talk with, uh, Waverly tomorrow. Waverly has one, um, the dolly that I saw, or at least I think they do. So.
We have a joint town safety meeting tomorrow and I'll be talking with the Waverly guys. I didn't realize they bought one. Kevin told me. I'll see how they like it, what it is, but.
So do we want to have Dan buy one now? Or wait again?
I mean, that's up to you. I would, maybe give me a dollar amount to spend up to and we'll just go from there. I mean allowance per se for a sign. Cause if I go to Waverly tomorrow and they have that dolly one and they say they hate it, then I'm gonna want the trailer one. Um.
The trailer one, I think would be the.
I buy three permanent ones, you know, I, I don't, I don't know. But instead of bringing it to council meeting every time, just, um, maybe let staff decide and give me a dollar amount.
I mean, based off of what you said, where the dolly is kind of in the middle?
Middle option. But again, we have to have something significant for it to be locked to. Now, like Kevin said also, we're talking prior, if they want it, they're gonna take it.
Well, I think.
Have five chains around it. They got a bull cutter, they'll take it.
Give you guys some ideas on talking with Waverly and maybe talking to a few other cities too, I mean.
Correct. And, you know, we do meet with Howard Lake, Waverly, uh, Cucato, Dassel. We have a safety meeting tomorrow and I'll, I'll put a bug in there and talk to all of them, see who's got what, see how they like it.
I'm, I'll make a motion to have the authority to purchase a new, uh, I guess.
Have to go up to 10 probably.
That's what I was gonna do. Just radar sign, not to exceed $10,000, once you guys decide which one you want to go with.
Second. Further discussion.
ARPA.
ARPA.
Funds to come out of, ARPA.
I was gonna ask where it was, where in the budget is gonna come out of, so.
We're looking good with that ARPA money still in 2020. Get out at some point in time. This is a great equipment to get at least a trial run with that one.
Is there an expiration on that money?
Yes.
Uh, I think it's December.
End of 2024, right?
24, okay. To at least earmark it, I think.
Has to be, has to be designated. Further discussion? All vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Ms. Andrea? Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero to purchase a new radar sign of staff's choosing up to $10,000 out of the ARPA money. Uh, agreement to terminate Girl Scout contract for city shed.
Mayor and Council, this is the agreement that the attorneys came up with to terminate the, the Girl Scouts contract with our, our shed. Now that they are disbanding and if they are agreeable to this, that contract would then be, um, null and void. So that would be our shed again to do with our city business.
Has anybody reached out to Joanne about this?
I think tonight was just to get the approval and then we'll reach out to Girl Scouts and see if they're agreeable to it.
Okay.
Thoughts, questions, comments?
If you guys don't want to do this, you know, that's okay too.
In discussion with Joanne, um, they pretty much have it cleaned out, not quite all of it yet. Um, they have agreed to give some of the supplies to celebrate Montrose and Boy Scouts. Um.
And I think Grace Place too, right? Are they getting some stuff?
Grace Place did when they had it all, everything out there. They got stuff for.
Cleaned it out, yeah.
Crafting and whatever not. So, and then, um, Joanne's just gonna get the key to us as long as we continue just to use it for, like, celebrate during the festivities and stuff. I'll make a motion to, um, terminate the contract upon talking to Joanne, who is, um, the current occupants of the building.
Second, further discussion. No discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Andrea?
Aye.
All vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Traffic code enforcement.
Mayor and Council, the next item is something that you had asked staff and the city attorney to, um, look into and draft a, an ordinance to, to add some, add some rules and stipulations to the, the, the current traffic code since most of our traffic stuff is in our zoning code, which is not enforceable by Wright County. This is what they came up with. Um, again, this is all, um, changeable. If there's things that you think, um, still need to be added, we can certainly make other adjustments, um, to, to the ordinances. Uh, there might be some specific things that need to be moved over, um, and that could be done with a different ordinance. So it's kind of a moving, moving target here, so.
And this will make it easier for the officers to enforce.
Makes it clear.
Makes it more clear for them.
And then the rest of the stuff we're gonna continue to work on to get moved over and?
Yeah, and if there's specific items that you guys think are really important that need to be moved, um, we can look at those and have, um, have ordinance amendments drafted for that too. It's hard to capture everything just because there's so much in the zoning code as far as the traffic stuff. Um, and, and what exactly you guys were looking for as far as specific items to be added to this. And some things may not be able to be added to this. I'm not sure about, you know, some of the specific parking things that we have in zoning might not be able to be part of the city code, so.
I, I think the, the biggest issue is just all the parking stuff, whether it's parking in parks overnight, whether it's parking on streets for long periods of time, city parking lots.
And this kind of does address that. It, it sets limits for parking on streets, um, time limits, um, for.
Yeah, and I just.
Parking consecutively on the street and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I was just saying that that, I think that's the, the biggest issue really with a lot of the traffic stuff is just the parking and.
The biggest problem with the way the ordinance used to be written was there was no definition exception. So definitions would be made up by anyone. So this adopts the 169.01 statute.
Yep.
Um, from the state of Minnesota that gives definition of what is a vehicle, what is a trailer, what is a ATV? What is this, that and the other? So then if all your, um, ordinances say something, we know what to go back and find a meaning. Seems weird that we have to define a vehicle, but a vehicle is defined by Minnesota statute. It was never defined by Montrose City ordinance.
I can just hear the argument now. Any questions or comments on the ordinance?
Just think it's long overdue.
Okay, uh, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2023 dash zero four. Uh, ordinance amending multiple sections of the Montrose City Code relating to traffic code enforcement.
I will second.
Further discussion? All vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Ms. Andrea?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Okay, I'll make a motion to pass resolution 2023 dash 16, uh, resolution authorizing the summary publication. uh resolution authorizing the summary publication of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero four.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All vote aye, Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Ms. Andrea?
Aye.
Passes five zero. New business, XL Mobile Substation Lease Contract.
Mayor and Council, uh Excel had a similar contract with us for last summer, they used um part of our property to do a substation for um during the duration of one of their projects. This project is shorter in duration, it's only two months, I believe, uh December and January of this uh this year and then twenty twenty-four. Um, they're gonna be paying for two thousand five hundred dollars for the consideration of the lease site and everything else is pretty much the same as last year, the site is the same, contract is the same, they've approved it.
Doesn't get in the way of anything.
I don't believe so, did it get in the way of anything?
No.
Last time they did it?
No.
I'm all for the city getting money out of land that we don't use or need.
Great.
Uh so I'll make a motion to approve the XL Mobile Substation Lease Contract.
I'll second.
Further discussion. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Ms. Andrea?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
All vote aye, motion passes five zero. Uh no open forum requests, upcoming meetings, Park and Rec, Tuesday, July eleventh, uh six P M, Montrose City Hall. Planning and zoning, Wednesday, July twelfth, seven P M, Montrose Community Center. EDA, Tuesday, July eighteenth, twelve P M, Montrose City Hall. City Council Workshop, uh Monday, July thirty-first, four P M, City Hall, uh the next regular city council meeting, Monday, August fourteenth, seven P M at.
Time of that workshop on the thirty-first may change.
Uh acknowledgements. I I just again want to say thanks to Public Works for spraying for mosquitoes, so I think it's helped and that it's not very wet. And uh and to the fire department, I think that you guys do a great job and having seen some of the stuff that you guys do up close and personal, I think that uh you guys are fantastic, so.
Have to go off of what Kirby said um with the fire the other night, it was said that you guys did a phenomenal job and you know, taking care of that and breaking it down right away, so thank you for that.
I'll acknowledge firefighter Jen Brenney for spending six months of her time with me. Three days a week. Uh going through that, uh it was a lot, a lot of work on her part and uh not only that, but she's a full-time nurse at Alina, so she allowed to have extra hours at her home, so.
I think she's gonna need more of that. Spending all that time with you.
Well, you can acknowledge her do then.
I'd like to congratulate you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
And as always, thank you to the city staff.
Yes.
Any other acknowledgements?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.